Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Series. I'll call the meeting to order. Notice that this meeting will be held in accordance with the California Government Code, Section 59453 subdivision E of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 54950 at SEC, Series Resolution Number 2022-34, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Remote public comment is also available for the Planning Commission meeting by emailing planning@ci.series.ca.us by 5:00 p.m. on the date of the meeting. Include the agenda item number or public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read the written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the Planning Commission and kept on file as part of the official record of the Planning Commission meeting. At this time, I will ask the flag be displayed, and I will ask you to join me as I recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Christopher. We'll move on now to roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, please note that Commissioner Catchell is excused this evening, so we have Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Martinez.
Present.
And Chairperson Smith.
Here, thank you. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare by any of the commissioners? All right, thank you. We'll move on to citizen communications to the Commission on matters not included on the agenda. While the Planning Commission welcomes and encourages participation in the Planning Commission meeting, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Planning Commission. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any matter not on the agenda? If so, please come to the podium. Christopher, you're gonna have to help me out. I don't, I can't see, so.
There's no one here in our audience that would like to speak, but let's check soon.
Of course. Public comment will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand to request to speak using the hand icon located at the bottom of your right hand of your screen. If you are participating by phone, please press star nine on your phone. Names will be called in the order. The requests are received, and your microphone will be unmuted when it's time for you to speak. Is there anyone on Zoom with their hand raised to speak?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Have we received any public comments through the email?
I have not received any.
All right, thank you. We'll move on then to consent calendar. Will the clerk please read the consent calendar?
Yes, item one, Clerk's Report of Posting the Agenda for the Regular Meeting of the Planning Commission of May 2, 2022, was posted on April 28, 2022.
Thank you. All right, from the Commission, I'll accept a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion. We accept the consent calendar.
All second. There's a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
And Chairperson Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0 with one absent.
Thank you. No items were removed from the consent calendars. We'll move on to public hearings. Item three, vesting tentative parcel map 21-09, site plan approval 21-10, and conditional use permit 21-11, proposal for a 58-unit apartment complex and one 4,000-square-foot convenience store building with a gas station on four proposed lots at the northwest corner of Morgan and Service Road, Raj Shandi Group applicant. And do we have a staff report?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, James Michaels with the Plan Division. Mr. Home, could you please put up page 69 of the staff report? Can you see it there?
Yes.
Yeah, that's page 65. That's the tentative map. Page 69. Almost there. There you go, right there. Yeah. There you go, thank you. Now, some of the, of our commissioners may recall that back in the fall of 2019, the city had approved a development proposal for this 4.85-acre site located here at the northwest corner of Morgan and Service Roads. At that particular time, that involved the general plan and master plan amendment, a vesting tentative parcel map, and a site plan approval entitlement for the subdividing of the property into four lots, and the construction of a 64-unit apartment complex, and one 8,000-square-foot retail shop building. That was back again in the fall of 2019. It was kind of similar to the layout that you're seeing here from the new applicant. But at that particular time, the master plan and general plan amendments became effective once the City Council approved the properties residential, commercial land designations, but the approvals for the tentative parcel map and the site plan until it had expired. Since then, there's been a change of ownership of the property, and the new owner desires to construct both residential and commercial developments with a similar site layout as to what was previously approved by the Plan Commission in 2019, except that now the new owner instead proposes four lots on a 50, with a 58-unit apartment complex and a 4,000 square-foot convenience store building with a gas station. So there's gonna be three entitlements. You have a vesting tentative parcel map, a site plan approval, and a conditional use permit. The tentative parcel map is gonna subdivide the site into four parcels where these lots will range from 0.85 acres to 1.6 acres in size, with three lots being reserved for the development of the apartment complex, and the remaining parcel four would be developed in a convenience store building with a gas station beyond that corner. The site plan approval request includes an architectural review of the apartment project that will construct a total building area of about 49,744 square feet spread over the four acres, and that is here on the screen as you see it. The plan consists of 18 two-story buildings to accommodate the 58 dwelling units, of which 36 of those are designed as two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units. Each unit is having an approximately 1,292 to 1,438 square feet of living area with a one-car garage, and the remaining 22 units will be designed as three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units, with each unit having approximately 1,584 to 1,662 square feet of living area with one-car garage. Primary access to the apartment units will be from Tranquil Lane and Morgan Road, and there'll be 127 parking spaces to be provided to serve the tenants and the guests of the apartment project. The parking requirement is being complied with. The applicant is meeting that. Okay, Mr. Home, could you turn to page 80 of the staff report? Thank you. Yeah, that's good. You got it. And so here on the screen, of course, there's 18 buildings here with the residential component, but here's a typical building that would be one of those buildings. Basically, they're gonna be two-story units, the height of about 24 feet, include a combination of earthen, cement, plaster finishes for the main body and stone veneer treatments at the base and column areas. Mr. Home, could you go back to page 69? Thank you. Okay, and so the last application we have for this evening is a request for a conditional use permit entitlement for the architectural review of a 4,000-square-foot Arco AMPM convenience store building with a 4,800-square-foot fuel canopy to cover eight fueling stations at the southeast corner of the property. The applicant has provided a site feasibility study that outlines the applicant's reasons for proposing a gas station for the property, which the Plan Commission can view on pages 81 through 114 of the staff report. The primary access to the convenience store building and gas station will be from Morgan Road and Service Roads, which will lead to the project parking area consisting of about 17 spaces to serve it. One of the things that we looked at here was, you know, we were concerned with originally with the traffic flow in and out of the site, and so staff had to determine that one of the things that they were gonna, we were gonna require of the applicant would be to limit ride-in and ride-out-only turning movements in and out of the site there off of Service and Morgan. And so this will be accomplished through the construction of concrete medians within Service Road areas with the raised center medians provided. It's expected that they'll help minimize the potential conflicts of going in and out of the project site. And Mr. Home, can you turn to page 118? Thank you. And so here's the rendering of the convenience store building. It's gonna be a single-story height, integrated with multiplane pitch roof features. At the Service Road building frontage, design at variable heights approximately 19 to 22 feet. The features include aluminum storefront windows that you see along Service Road of the, with the combination of earthen plaster finishes for the main body, as loyal as we have some metal awnings above the window areas. Staff is in support of the project. It does establish a commercial and residential use that provides opportunity to support the good balance of the commercial businesses and housing opportunities that already exist near Service Road and Morgan Road intersection. And so with that, staff has no objections to the applicant's request, subject to the conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Michaels. Does anyone on the Commission have any questions of staff? All right, this may be more for the applicant, James, but do you know if the gas station will have charging stations as well?
The applicant is not proposing that at this time. It doesn't mean that they can't. If they were to, they, depending on how that worked out with the parking spaces, they could do that through approval of building permit, which would be at, you know, administrative level through a building permit process.
All right, thank you. And then the previous property owner, who, as you already stated, had received the tentative parcel map and site plan entitlement, they also proposed some square-foot retail commercial shop, but I don't recall, it wasn't a gas station, it was just.
Correct, that is correct. That was a, like an 8,200-square-foot commercial retail building that could have, hold some type of retail food, you know.
Right. Was it in the same, were the lots in the same configuration?
Excellent question. Yes, the lots are basically the same, the same configurations as you see them right now.
So the location of the gas station would have been the commercial development from the previous submission?
Correct, correct.
All right, and then I think this is my final question. You said there was 120-some parking spaces in the apartment area, and that was sufficient to accommodate the parking requirements. Does that include the parking in each of the single-car garage, or is that on the surface block?
Excellent question, yes. That, that is, that includes the one-car garages that covered in the open parking space. We have a condition of approval like we did on the previous project in 2019 that the, when the tenants sign the leases there, that they basically have to have enough room to park their vehicle in the car. They can't just put a lot of stuff in there and not be able to park in there. That's an agreement that we have.
Well, that's a good point. Does, does the lease agreement limit the number of vehicles each tenant can have? So if there's, there, then you said there's one parking garage for each unit, which means that's 58 parking spaces. And I think you said there was 127.
That, so there's 58 one-car garage spaces, and then the remaining spaces that you, you see would be for the guests, and so that, that, it lies with our updated Munich code, the number of spaces per Munich code requirement there.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
My point is that if there are two vehicles per household, and one of them is in the garage, the number of parking spaces required and accommodated in this plan would adequately serve two vehicles per household, which I would say many people have. And so is there, I don't know if you want to go back to the map, I didn't, is there any?
Christopher, you can go back to page 69.
Is there any other visitor parking other than those spots? So I noticed when you come in there on the corner, or I don't know if that's an actual entrance, and you can't see me pointing it to it, but you see there in the left corner?
Right.
Are those?
Yeah, that, that's where the arrow has the cursor there, that's just an emergency vehicle.
The top, the top, the top.
The very top.
Go on, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. On the top right, I'm sorry, I don't know my right from my left. There you go, there you go. See all those spots right there?
Yeah. That includes, yeah, all, the 127 is part of those.
In the count.
Right. It's included.
All right, so there's 127 parking spots and 58 units, so if everybody has a parking spot, that's, I don't know if I can do math better than I know my right from my left, but what, what is that, like 116?
Right.
So there would be about 11 spots for visitors.
Correct.
Could I, could I ask, James, is it 122 or 127 spaces?
127.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
All right, okay. Those, those were my questions. Anybody else have any questions of James or?
I have one more.
Daniel, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Hey, James, on page 82 of the staff report, it mentions on the summary, other services offered. It says that there's gonna be a separate freestanding 60-unit mini storage facility on the south end of the lot, designed to add 60 more units by year three. Could you speak a little bit more on that? Right there, so you got the location, traffic count, and then at the very bottom right there, other services. It says it's gonna offer free air machine and coin-operated vacuum hoses for cars and light trucks, and a separate freestanding 60-unit mini storage facility.
Yeah, that, that, I think that was something else, separate freestanding 60-unit minimum mini storage unit. I, I don't, perhaps the applicant can elaborate on that, that's not, I'm not aware of that, but.
Okay, yeah, I was just reading it, I noticed that, what that was about.
I, I could just see that, just the first sentence, the free air machine and coin-operated vacuum hoses for cars, if that's part of the, the, the 17. Maybe there could be a couple spaces available for some spaces like that, but, yeah, this is, this one, this part, I don't, I think the applicant could elaborate on that, but anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that question. Nice. That's a good question, I think, when the applicant gets a chance, we'll ask about that. So if there's no other questions of staff, I will open the public hearing and see if there's anyone in the audience, including the applicant, who would like to speak on this matter.
Could I ask one question? This is Sam with the engineering. Hey, Christopher, could we go back to the site map, please? Okay, now, my question to you, do we have enough trash enclosures to accommodate 58 units?
We get three of them there.
Three of them, how about, how about the, on building two, which is the lower-left corner, how do you expect those units to collect their garbage?
Yeah, they, they're gonna, they would have to, they're gonna have to, you know, wheel their, their waste to the, or carry their waste to one of those other trash enclosures there. They got three of them.
One on top, right?
Yeah, yeah. Again, this was similar to, to the one in 2019, but.
Because I'm, I'm kind of worried that we don't have enough. That's, that's my thoughts.
James, did staff have, have staff in the departments have a chance to review these plans prior to bringing it forward?
Yes, we, yes, we did. The, the minimum number of units that was being proposed versus what the typical number of trash enclosures required, it, it does meet that. Now, whether or not placement, again, that, that's, you know, that's up to whether or not, you know, the Commission feels it needs to be redesigned, but this is, again, this was similar to what we had previously.
Madam Chair, if I may, I spoke with Tony Cordell. She, she's in Public Works and works directly with, you know, the question, I asked her the question that Sam brought up, if this was enough area.
Okay.
Ends, and she, she looked at it, and she said yes.
Okay, I'm good with that then. Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, then, I'll reopen the public hearing and see if there's anyone in the audience, including the applicant, who'd like to speak on this matter. And it looks like Veronica has her hand raised. Hello, and welcome.
Well, it's a pleasure being here this evening, Chair and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be able to present this project after many, many months of hard work, and we are delighted that we had the opportunity actually to redefine this project a little bit and improve it from where the owners took it. They purchased the site in the middle of the pandemic, and we tried to work with the approved plans that the Commission's did approve back in 2019, and we had some challenges on anchoring a tenant on an 8,000-square-feet store. And so after many months of research and economic study that is part of your agenda today, it's not very common, they usually, owners are open to show their, in their revenues and their return on revenues, but he is actually very open to share with the city why this proposal makes sense to the city and is actually consistent with the general plan policies of your community. I want to mention that this site plan and project actually has five of the general plan policies met, which are promote infill. This development has a utilization of a parcel under use, and also the general plan goal 2G promotes the development and commercial use surrounding by land use that has not been utilized in a way and assist the, the economic vitality of the area. Another general plan policy, 2G six, this project encourage and shows a mixed use of housing, allowing encouraging of housing of, with commercial component. And general plan policy 2L six also has a multifamily residential design, which we're pleased to, to show this evening. And lastly, policy 2L nine, which is a commercial and office design development, which you will see that this AMPMC store also will have a component of managerial and service provider to the community. I do want to add to the question about electrical use EBE. Yes, the site has by code two EV charging stations, so that will, that will help facilitate to those, they actually have other means of using fuel. In regards to the garbage, we are consistent, but we are open if we need to just figure out another way, and we're, we're open to work again with staff. But I do want to mention that your staff has taken in the last five months a lot of work to, one, the project is updated to the new Munich code, and that's why you see the 127 parking spaces. The previous project had less parking spaces, they were approved. So we updated this project to be consistent with the most current Munich code. We also has changed the aesthetics a little bit, and we consider this a little bit of an improvement what it was before by adding a different kind of fencing throughout the perimeter of the area, a nice tall wall to protect the sound barrier from the commercial to the residential component. Staff also look into the traffic flow, and one thing that I know we were backing for with the conditions of approval, and we agree with all the conditions of approval, but this morning we did have a conversation about allowing U-turn on the traffic, new traffic signal light over there. Other than that, we are happy to be to this stage and hoping to be under construction within the next four to five months. So I'm here, and my, my team actually is here, the owner is listening as well, and we had the engineering team, which Marshall Swish and Daniel Barnes, and the architect is also available for any questions, Alex with AG Architectural. So we're here, and if we can answer any further questions, we are happy to do so. I do want to reflect that in page 98 of the staff, you will see the total investment, and I'm, I'm okay sharing my screen, but I'm sure you can, staff can probably go to the study report. The daily operation cost and financial projections shows the ability to sustain a C-store with a gas station, and this gas station will service something that is missing on other gas station, which is a diesel component. And that total investment from the owners is about $3.5 million with a projected revenue within five years of $4.4 million and an IIR of 30% return. So we felt that staff was very clear that it was undoubted why to put another gas station in Series, so we took that to heart, and we contracted a professional service, which obviously had a typo on the, I believe, Commissioner Martinez captured that, and we couldn't, we wanted to retract it, but it was too late, we already submitted the report, but it's just unfortunately typo from the document preparer, so I apologize for that.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Vargas, and so the typo you're referring to is the section he identified on page 82 as other services. So if I can interpret what you're saying, there won't be any 60-unit mini storage facility on the south end?
It will not, I promise.
I guess now we got you on record, so it's in the minutes. Appreciate that. Christopher, could you mind stop sharing your screen so we can see the full screen of the speakers? Thank you so much. All right, well, we appreciate your comments. Is there anyone on the Commission that has any questions or comments for Mrs. Vargas? All right, seeing none, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter?
Yes, do you mind standing in the podium?
All right, Mr. Pratt, even from here. All right, Mr. Pratt, even from here, I can see that it's you.
Yes, I, I know this in and out, out turning phase never work. They put an islands, raised islands out in the streets. And what are these apartments going for? Are they renting those or selling them?
Okay. Well, thank you. So I, I didn't, I didn't quite catch your comment about the right in, right out. I think that in Mr. Michael's comments, he mentioned there would be some concrete barriers that would require right in, right out, if that's what you were asking. And then you were asking if these are market rate or low income pricing. Is that right? Okay. James, do you know, or Mrs. Vargas?
Probably Veronica could elaborate, but I believe that when I last talked with her that these were going to be market value.
Market rate.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience there, Christopher, that would like to speak on this matter?
No.
Do we have anyone on Zoom with their hand raised to speak on this item?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you so much. One last thing I'd like to say while we still have the public hearing open, given that there has been concern expressed about the garbage containers and the adequacy of that. While I have no concerns about any other issue, I would like to make sure that staff works with the applicant to make sure that we do have adequate garbage as everyone knows that, you know, a few pieces of flying paper can make for a very messy environment in an otherwise nice area. So that's my only ask. And unless any commissioners have any other questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any discussion or motion?
I'd just like to clarify. So your ask is that despite the, the written condition of approval that says that there will be three enclosures that it will be however many enclosures are necessary based on based on what Public Works requires at the time that a building permit is is pulled for those enclosures. Is that correct?
Well, yes, I understand that the condition is based on what the public work requirement is, and I'm assuming that's tied to a code or some other kind of requirement. I, I just would like there to be additional discussion at staff level to make sure that that's the case. And given the volume of folks that are going to be living here, that in spite of the meeting the requirement that it is adequate. I'm not intending to add any condition on any motion.
Okay, understood.
All right. Any other comments from the commission? With not, if there's not, I'll accept a motion at this time.
All right, I'll make a move. Give this a try. Make a motion to approve two-one-dash-zero-nine. The ten of parcel map and also site plan approval SPA twenty-one-dash-ten and conditional use permit twenty-one-dash-eleven.
And I also think we need to approve the mitigated negative declaration. So there should be four items. If you'd like to include that, Mr. Johnson, approve the mitigated negative debt and then the three resolutions, oh-nine, ten and eleven.
Okay. Can I repeat how you worded that, please?
So the required action is approving the draft resolution twenty-two-dash-zero-eight, which is the mitigated negative deck. Approving draft resolution twenty-two oh-nine, which is the vesting tentative parcel map. Approving draft resolution PC twenty-two dash-ten, which is the specific plan amendment. And approving draft resolution twenty-two dash-eleven, which is the conditional use permit. I think I got that all right. Didn't I? Anybody? Everybody head nodding?
Very well said. So if, if anyone agrees, they can just say so moved.
Mr. Johnson, if you'd like to make the motion, you can say so moved per.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The same with so moved.
One-dash-eight.
I'll second that motion.
All right. So thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
Commissioner Martinez.
Hi.
And Chairperson Smith.
Hi.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Vargas. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
You as well. We'll move on. There's no new business, no public meetings, no unfinished business and no matters initiated by the planning commissioner staff. Anyone on the commission have any reports to make?
No. No reports for me. I am looking forward to this project because I think they've done a real nice job on the architectural part of it and having enclosed garages. I think it's, I think it's a really nice project.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
All right, we'll move. I have nothing to report. We'll move on to Nubia. Where'd you go? Oh, there you are.
I'm here. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Nothing to report this evening.
Appreciate that. Anyone from, anything from city staff?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
James?
Yeah, just that we will have a meeting on May sixteenth. And regarding Cambridge Estates Phase Two home plans, home designs. So they finally came in, you may recall back in twenty twenty twenty, commission approved a time extension for the map and they've been working steadily on that. And they finally got their home designs in that. And so that will be presented to you on the sixteenth. So.
Right. Perfect. Anyone else on staff have anything, any comments? All right, seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which, as James said, will be held on Monday, May sixteenth. I look forward. And I think we should know, we should be in the building at that point.
Okay. We sure hope so.
All right. Thanks, you guys. I appreciate seeing you all and appreciate your time.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everyone.